We have one item on the agenda for an open public hearing on a request for a conditional use permit amendment by the Hormel Foundation, Learning Tree, and Austin Port Authority. Before we address that, there's the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, could I have a motion to approve as...
Move that they be approved, this is written.
Motion by Brenda, second by Wallace. Commissioner Wallace, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Huyam, you want to present the first petition to us?
Just for the record, this conditional use amendment request is actually a preliminary review, just given an opportunity for the Planning Commission and the citizens to have a little insight as to what the development's going to consist of, what properties it includes, and what may lie ahead. If you look at the past a little bit, as far as actions that have been taken on some of the property, or at least the expanded properties that are proposed to be involved with the Hormel Institute, if you look on the monitor, there are green shaded parcels that are owned by the Leaning Tree LLC, and I think those are on your monitor. Can you see those okay?
Yeah.
Yep. Those parcels are owned by one of the petitioners relating to the project. One other thing I want to point out is the Austin City Crane Park. That is also will be part of the discussion as we move forward here. Any questions on the property that's involved?
The one that's in yellow, I think you got, is it 65?
Actually, 54 and 65 are in kind of a tan color.
Okay, tan. Are those people doing anything?
Those people have been approached for acquisition, but there has not been any...
Because I look at the plan for parking, that one appears that it's going to be in the midst of the parking lot.
That's correct.
Any other questions relating to the site?
The blue properties on here won't be involved, right?
The blue properties will not be involved in any action relating to what's being proposed. I don't know if in the future, if there's would be any involvement with those parcels or not, but it...
Are you proposing to zone this R0 right now?
It is already zoned R0.
Okay. And the blue properties, obviously, they're still...
R1, yep.
So they would be grandfathered in?
No.
Continue to stay that way?
Correct, yep. What's been reviewed by the Planning Commission here, the blue properties and even some of the green properties are not involved with the action. No, yep. The blue properties are still owned as R1, single-family residence district, and actually the only, I can show you here on the monitor as I go through it here. So if you look at, the gentleman had the question about some of the properties located east of 8th Street Northeast. The property involved with any conditional land use amendment would involve the existing Hormel Institute site located west of 8th Street and north of 16th Avenue. The other area involved is located south of 16th Avenue and east of 8th Street. The campus, proposed changes and expanded off-street parking. If you look at the off-street parking, this parcel that has the boundary around it, that has not been acquired. One thing I'm going to add to my staff report is that, you know, for the next public hearing, that there needs to be a defined landscape plan, you know, for this parking area, and also a buffer that is shown, which is required by city code, that has to be provided between this residential property and the parking.
Do you know what they are going to do with this property? I mean, essentially, the property between 15th and 16th and 17th Avenue?
The only definite plans that are made is just the area that I've reviewed.
For now, your parking lot, pretty much, parking lot and...
Parking lot, and there's two expansion areas of the institute. One is off, it actually would be located in the existing off-street parking lot east of the institute. You know, that's, this is the, kind of the general building footprint. And then also in the northwest corner, there's a proposed addition of a lecture hall.
Okay, so...
The reason, you know, if you have property that's...
Well, I'm one of the last properties they need down there.
Okay.
One of the three properties. Have been approached a couple of times, we can't agree on price.
Sure. But that, that part of it is not a part of any action, you know, if you were required to do a public hearing notice, which that's why if you live within 350 feet of the borders of this...
Okay, so that what you're doing right now doesn't really affect us at all?
No, it doesn't. Not if you're outside of this or this. I'm not sure about this gentleman here.
I don't think that...
Okay. But there, everything involved here is west of 8th Street and north of 16th, and south of 16th, and east of 8th Street.
As far as you can tell, they plan on acquiring all the property on between 15th and 16th Avenue.
That I don't know.
I've got a neighbor right next door, they haven't approached him yet, or...
Yeah.
And we've got two houses left out in the block that...
Okay.
Supposed to be very non-interested, and yet they bought houses...
Yeah, one thing we should do, this hearing's televised, and it's kind of important that if you have questions, normally I would do a review of the proposal, then the chairman would ask if you have questions.
Well, yeah, I might as well go back home. I'm sorry about the crocs, but I got halfway here for it, otherwise I still have an hour.
(laughing)
When is hooking up this?
That I, that's not part of this hearing, so I don't know. So, sorry about that, but is there any questions about at least the land area involved? Again, and I've got some more detailed illustrations, but the actual building construction involves the, it's a 20-lab addition with other various expanded building use areas that I'll go over in more detail. There's a reconfiguration of this parking lot. The stormwater retention pond will still be utilized for stormwater retention. Access to this parking lot with aisle widths, et cetera, with both this parking lot and this expanded parking lot has been approved for fire apparatus access, you know, with turning radiuses, et cetera. So as far as building addition, that's, that's what is involved.
Craig, I don't know if this is the right, right time, nor do I know what pertains to this group, but do you know what they're going to do for a walkway from the parking lot?
I'll get into that, yep. If you look at a 3D figure, and Mr. Minow had a question about the architect being present for the meeting, they will be in attendance to the meeting in March. But if you look at the building again, that the institute expansion is in this area, the lecture hall in the northwest corner of the facility, you can see the retention pond here. If you look at the exterior finishes, it'll be, it's designed to match the existing institute building, basically pre-cast concrete and glass is what the exterior finishes would be. If you look at, this is an existing buffer from mechanical rooftop units. A lot of that is going to be expanded into this area, but it'll have the same heights as some of these buffers that are currently in place, and also the penthouses which are used for the mechanical rooms. Any questions on this illustration? We don't really have to do much with the floor plans because it's inside of the building, but I would like the Planning Commission to at least briefly look at the layout. Again, the lecture auditorium, there's a pre-function area, and parking that will be surrounded that to accommodate that addition. The institute addition, there's, there's an addition of 20 labs, so in this area there'll be 10 labs on each floor. Offices, conference rooms surrounding the lab area, there's a men's and women's locker room, and a library on the first floor. What there's also involved here, or included, some of the design, for example, in this area, there's going to be an exposed stairway to the second floor. This has been changed, and the elevator will be located in the northeast corner of the building addition. This part of the building is actually the existing original Hormel Institute building where expansions were done this way, and now it'll be this way. And this is the second floor, somewhat mirrors the first floor, but the labs, support offices, conference rooms. There's some freezers, just kind of accessory uses to the, to the researches that's done. The main entrance to the building, there'll actually be two on the east side of the building. One will be this location, and the other one here. This is somewhat hard to read. I would anticipate at next month's meeting that will have probably some colored illustrations with the building elevations, but again, it involves pre-cast concrete and, and glass This is the landscape plan, and I'll go over this in more detail in the rest of my report, but it shows proposed plannings. One thing that I, I made note of that isn't in your backup material, that this plan looks nice, but we need a more detailed landscape plan with species of plants, stop size of trees. We need a replacement schedule for the plannings because we have a tree preservation ordinance. I know in going through the planning process for this, they are going to try to, any trees that are removed or need to be removed, they're going to try to transplant those on the site, so they'll, hopefully it won't lose any trees, but... So a more detailed landscape plan, landscape plan and buffer for the new parking lot. Other additional information would be obviously a drainage plan, or topography plan. There was a question relating to, and I don't have that yet, if you look at both, both 16th Avenue Northeast and 8th Street Northeast, those road widths from curve to curve are 42 feet in width, and what they're going to do is reconfigure this road intersection now. Right now, it's designed in a way that it's, it's really spread open, and they want to redesign it to accommodate pedestrian traffic better than it does now. So that'll be submitted with the plans for next month. If you look at, one of the criteria in approving a conditional land use is the, that it doesn't have any adverse effect on the local traffic patterns. 16th Avenue Northeast currently has 2,250 daily trips on it. I know that if you look at the MINDOT design standards, you can have a public roadway 36 feet in width, and that'll accommodate in excess of 10,000 trips. So as far as how the currently road system is designed, this proposed expansion shouldn't have any adverse effect. Another issue is the tree replacement schedule. You know, we need specific counts on that, and also species and size of the species being planted, sight lighting details for both within the campus itself of where the building is, and also the expanded off-street parking lot. But if you look at surrounding, current zoning classification is an R0 district. Previously, the Planning Commission and City Council looked at some amendments to our comprehensive plan. They approved a petition to rezone the property to an R0 district. If you look at surrounding land uses, we have undeveloped land to the north, which is an R1 district. To the south is industrial, that is I2. To the east is a combination of single-family and undeveloped, and to the west is the Hormel Corporate Office facility, which is an R0 district. The proposed addition would be approximately just under 83,000 square feet for the footprint of the building. If you look at the total floor area of the building, it's just under 151,000 square feet. Section 1156 kind of gives the Planning Commission guidance as to what should be considered when acting on either a new conditional land use or an amendment. There's specific areas about the geographical area, depreciating surrounding land uses, the character demonstrated need for the use, and whether it would create any adverse conditions for the other properties in the neighborhood. Other than what I mentioned previously, with the considerations or staff report, again, additional traffic impact information on 16th Avenue. I think once, prior to next month's meeting, there'll be a more detailed plan of the design of that intersection. Building exterior finishes, that's been addressed, but again, they'll be, they've actually got a three-dimensional PowerPoint presentation that will be shown in great, greater detail, and the drainage plan. There's information on the site development, the land area, how the proposed development complies or exceeds the development standards for this zoning classification, the parking stalls, the design of those proposed new lots or expanded lots, and number of stalls provided, and what is required, so...
Were you going to review that briefly at this point?
I can.
Parking lot requirement. I guess, the question I have is the, I think they're labeled as a proof of parking, and I'm just wondering, I mean, the drawing shows parking lot, some spaces like in the lot that's not owned yet, and it shows dotted ones, and I guess the...
All of the, all of the expanded parking, the property, is owned by the petitioners. There isn't any, there is possibly, if you look at this portion of the off-street parking in the new lot, you'll see there's a row with dotted lines. The petitioner owns that property, but there's consideration of where those stalls may be developed at a later date if needed.
So that's what you're considering, proof of parking? Is that they have the space?
Correct, yep.
But they are not going to develop it?
If, if the final plan shows that those stalls are not provided, and if they don't meet the 224 stalls required, then there's a parking appeal process they'd have to go through.
Okay.
Well, the question though, is it, is it the 263 required or the 224? Says we totally require per zoning, 263.
Well, I guess, you know, we don't need to answer that tonight, but that needs to be clarified.
It would look like they do need to expand their parking because of, they were counting the part where those houses are too.
Yeah. That's my question. They, they own the property that the house is shown on?
Where the house is shown, they have an agreement, from what I understand, but they do not own that parcel.
Okay, so they're in the process?
Correct.
Okay. So that would be at the time...
But again, whatever, just in going through this conditional land use process, that doesn't give them the authority to waive any development standards. If they didn't meet the setbacks, they would have to submit a separate petition. If they don't meet the parking, again, there's a parking appeal process. They've done, and I don't have that, but the staff at the institute has done a parking analysis where they've recorded the number of stalls used daily, and whether it's different times of the day, and that'll be a part of the presentation, yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's where that total stalls needed number comes from. They're basing that on the study that was done by the staff.
Okay.
But that would require that they request the variance if they want to just go with that number.
That's correct.
So can you explain the status of the theater, the parking around the theater? That's going to be bid as an alternative?
That's a possibility. That initially was not part of the project, but it was something that was requested by the staff at the institute, and there is a preliminary, and that's another reason that this isn't a final action on this request. One thing is to get more detailed information. Secondly is, and for the bonding dollars provided for this project, there's a pre-design review that the state does, that, I mean, it's quite an in-depth study, and it was their recommendation that we did not act on this until, or do any final action on this until they've completed the, the review of the pre-design. That pre-design is required because there's bonding dollars that are utilized for paying for a portion of the project.
Okay. But really, the conditional use is not dependent on whether that's included or not? The theater and that additional parking?
From what I understand, we have, I mean, we've got some estimated dollars of what the project would cost, including the lecture hall. With those estimated dollars, there may be some shortfall of funds available to accommodate that. Our proposal for the bonding dollars did not include the lecture hall, and there might be some other fundraising efforts done to accommodate the costs for that.
So can you address the question of why they have the parking on that corner versus straight east? And the question that Commissioner Hurst had as far as traffic, employee traffic pattern?
Yeah, the traffic pattern for pedestrian traffic will be, there's going to be a reconfiguration done of this intersection, and that submittal will be made. The plan is that the pedestrian traffic, I mean, if you look at the plan right now, will cross 8th Street in this location, walk up the sidewalk to the north, and into the main entry.
That won't, that won't include lights? That'll just be...
That intersection will not be a controlled intersection. There might be a pedestrian, obviously, a pedestrian crosswalk there with a sign, maybe a flashing light or something like that, but it's, it won't be a controlled intersection. Stop signs.
I think they need to, there needs to be something done though, because that's rather dangerous, I think, with that curve there.
You know, as far as the, in going through the planning process, there, there was discussion about having off-street parking in both the north block and the south block, and it ended up this was the final decision that was made by the steering committee, anyway.
So Craig, it looks like, in fact, the crosswalk then is actually, will be after the traffic coming in and out of that lot. In other words, crosswalk, traffic will, going in and out of that lot will be before the crosswalk. Do you know what I mean?
Well, the access points for the parking lot, there's two on the southerly end and two on the northerly end.
Oh, so they could drive down that street.
And there, you know, there might be, I mean, to me, a good design to eliminate or minimize inner, or traffic on the pedestrian would be to, you know, if you had one as, two of them on the south as ins and two on the north as outs, or, you know, just to have the traffic flow from one direction versus the other. If you look at this north... If you look at this north property, in that dotted area, they're actually, it's a very similar situation to this south block, where they're right in the middle, right here, there is an unacquired property there. There's, in going through the discussions on that, I mean, to me, a thing that would support having the off-street parking here would be, it would be more centrally located. If there's additional development here, you know, with the building, then you would have, you know, you could have shared parking facilities. Some of the other discussion related to having a, a building right along the interstate, some people in the committee thought that was a good thing, some thought it wasn't, so...
Is there any other questions for Mr. Hoyam, this time?
Well, it'll be interesting to see how that, the more detailed plans, I think...
Yeah, and again, what, what we wanted to do with the information we had was to just review that with the planning commission and the public, take comments, and those comments will be reflected in the, the plan for next month's meeting, so...
Okay. Is there, are there any other actions, or items of business?
The only thing I have is, did you get a copy of my annual report?
Two pages of the report.
Yep, yep, and I don't know if there's any questions relating to that, or, or comments. I think if you look over all the, the projects in two thousand thirteen, we had some nice projects, you know, probably the more substantial would be the refined products for Hormel Foods, Riverland Community College, the early childhood education center was completed. We're working with a developer on the Fox Point addition, and I just talked to them recently, and they're looking at, that was a planned unit development that consisted of just under a hundred housing units, and they're looking at changing that to be a combination of single-family homes, townhomes for rent, and some senior housing. The Watts Truck Stop Project, truck traffic is obviously very critical for the community, and it was a blessing to have another property owner come in and acquire that property to keep that facility open, and bigger plans for that, that'll be coming up this, later this year. And Runnings Hardware, I was out there yesterday, they are looking at opening April first, and a lot of the shelving and everything is in place now, so... Otherwise, I think I've pretty much summarized my other involvement, and some of this is related to how I was involved in trying to accomplish some of the city council's goals. If you look at, on the second page, there's kind of a summary of our construction valuation, how it compared to previous years, and more recently, two thousand twelve, or, yeah, two thousand twelve. Actually had more permits issued this past year, but kind of lacked, probably our, our biggest project valuation-wise was the Hormel Foods refining building addition, but I know what we have planned for this upcoming year, I can think of probably just two projects that will probably exceed our total valuation of this year by four or five million dollars, so... And there's also a comparison of other surrounding communities. If you look in two thousand twelve, if you look at all the communities actually similar in size south of the metro area, we had the highest construction valuation, and I don't have those totals for two thousand thirteen yet. And then to close, there's a list of our zoning complaints compared to the previous year, the numbers are down some, but I think we've, we've got a successful program with that, or an aggressive program, and we'll continue our efforts in that area, so...
So are those inspections for, like, for two thousand thirteen, you had a thousand sixty-seven inspections, is that from the building department, or is that from complaints and...
Those are just complaints.
Okay.
Our, those other inspections, typically they far exceed two thousand.
You don't track those?
Um, you know, we do.
For this purpose?
We do, but I'm not, I mean, you can break it down into building, plumbing, mechanical, That's all I have to report, unless there's some questions.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, but, motion in second for adjournment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, meeting adjourned, thank you.